Cozy tonight.
So let me, let me call the two orders at seven oh one ish. Welcome you guys. The first item on the agenda is your presentation of the June thirty two thousand twenty-four audit report. Let me introduce yourself and just take it away.
So my name is Leslie Zoll. I was the principal on the job for fiscal year twenty-four. I'm Liz Forsyth. I was the senior and I've been consistent on the team for a couple of years now. I want to thank you all for allowing me to come present tonight. I know that the financial statements can be quite large, so we brought a shortened PowerPoint presentation to just kind of go over some things. If you want to move the slide for me.
Yep, I will. Just, just, it's being a little, I just want to make, I just want to make sure I'm sharing the screen. Just hold on one second. We're being a little temperamental here. Okay. Someone please want to share my screen? I thought I did. Okay, now this is sharing. Okay. So. Next slide.
Yeah, if you could go to the agenda, that would be great.
Not this one?
No.
Okay.
So for my presentation tonight, I'm just going to walk through what auditors do, what our scope is. High level executive summary of your audit results, going to go over your basic financial statements and some highlights within the notes. And then I'm going to have Liz talk about the state single audit and the governance communication, which is items that were required to communicate to the board. And then I'm going to close with some new Gatsby's that are coming that you guys should be aware of and some industry trends. So as far as our audit scope goes, it's management's responsibility. Martha, could you click the little button to minimize those?
Oh, minimize this?
Yeah.
Sure.
It's the one.
Yeah. Yep. But it's not on my screen, so it's hard to find. So.
And there's a chair over here. Can you see better?
Oh, I can see the sign.
There it is.
If we watch one of the.
If I move it.
Your screen's extended.
Yeah.
Can you slide your mouth? There you go. There you go. Yeah, thank you.
I don't know. Good.
Okay, sorry. Very. So it's management's responsibility to develop the financial statements in accordance with GAAP. We come in and we strike an opinion on those numbers. We also express, and in relation to opinion, on the schedule of federal and state awards. You did not reach the threshold this year for federal single audit, or you just were required to do the state single audit. We also express an opinion on the major programs that we test in relation to that state single audit. I think it's important to share with everyone that we do not opine on internal controls as part of our scope. But we are required to tell you if there's any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we find along the way as we perform our audit, either on the financial statements as a whole or on the state and federal programs. So our executive summary of audit results, you, the town of Old Line had a clean opinion. So on the financial statements, you had an unmodified opinion, which is what you'd want to receive each and every year. You also got an unmodified opinion on the states and the audit, the state financial assistance. And there's no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we need to talk about tonight. So clean opinion all around. Very good. And then I just want to walk you through some of the financial statement highlights. So I like to show this table because it's part of the management's discussion and analysis. If you go back to the financial statements, you'll find it on page seven. But I like to show this slide because it shows you all of your governmental funds together on a full accrual basis of accounting. So it shows all of your long-term assets, long-term liabilities collectively as a whole. And also shows comparative. So as of six thirty twenty twenty-four, your total net position was forty-six point four million. And that's an increase of about four million from the previous fiscal year. This next table is from, is exhibit three on the financial statements, your government, governmental funds. Now, this is on a modified basis of accrual, so it doesn't include any long-term items. And each column that you see there on the screen are what we opine on separately. So the general fund is opined on separately. Miscellaneous fund is another opinion unit which we opine on. And then the other governmental funds column is a lot of your smaller funds combined together. Fund balance in the general fund for six thirty twenty twenty-four was fifteen point five million. Of that fourteen point four million is on the side, and that's an increase of two million from the previous fiscal year. The miscellaneous fund increased about thirty-three thousand from last year, and you have a fund balance of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And then that cumulative other governmental funds column decreased about two hundred and forty-five thousand from last year. And your committed fund balance is three point nine. Property tax collections still seem very high. We've seen great collection rates throughout the state for twenty-four. Your general fund unassigned fund balance, fourteen point four percent, thirty-five percent of budgetary fund expenditures. That's a very healthy fund balance. In terms of your budgetary results, budgetary revenues were higher than expected, which is what we would want, by one point eight million. Your expenditures came in lower by one point. You're on a million dollars. So that definitely contributed to the increase in your general fund, fund balance for the year. And now Liz, you have about the state single audit. Yep. So there was no federal single audit this year, like Leslie said, so we just tested your state expenditures, which were one point nine million for fiscal point four. The two major programs we tested were the clean water revenue bonds and tiered pilot. There were no findings related to that. There was an unmodified opinion on both programs tested. And no internal control compliance findings for those either. And for the governance communication, so overall, no new standards were adopted this year. There was a new Gatsby one hundred, which related to accounting changes and error corrections, but that was not applicable to the town this year. We encountered no difficulties while performing the audit. Your estimates that are communicated in the governance communication memo are these three. Your landfill closure liability, which is calculated by a consultant engineer. The useful lives of capital assets used for the depreciation calculation. And the allowance for doubtful accounts, which is used for the tax receivable calculation. Other than that, there were no disagreements with management. Management did not consult with other accountants. We had no uncompleted statements nor our independence issues. Thanks all the fun stuff, the new standards that are coming. Gatsby one oh one is applicable for this next fiscal year, six thirty twenty twenty-five. So we'll have to go back and look at how you've been calculating it previously and make sure it's in accordance with the new Gatsby. If you're, if, if you're conservative enough, there's probably not going to be a lot of changes. But there's some nuances as far as sick leave and whether or not the sick leave is more than likely to be paid out. So there's a little bit of difference there than what we've seen in the past. But we'll certainly help Anita implement that standard as we go through. The next one that's also applicable for June thirty, if you want to look this slide. Certain risk disclosures that won't highly impact Anita's work at all. It's more on the financial statement presentation. If you have any of those risks, there'll be additional disclosures within the financial statements that we will help Anita draft. One oh three on the reporting model, you don't have any enterprise funds because that's the main difference in this Gatsby. So not too much that will impact the town of Old Line for that or the next one. But I do want to bring you to the next slide. There's, if you want to look at the QR code, it brings you right to the state and local insight page where there's articles, webinars. We're going to be doing a breakfast in June for all of board officials to go over the financial statements and what you really need to know about them. So I encourage you to come if you're able. But it's always a good stopping point to, to see what's going on in the industry.
Anybody have any questions on financials, on state single audit? Okay, well, thank you.
Well, if, if the question is, do we have any questions generally, I'm sure somebody. And this slide, Martha, can you send it around to everybody? That'd be great.
I'm going to stop sharing though now.
The only question I have is regarding the unassigned fund balance of fourteen point four million. Do, does your firm have any guidelines regarding the magnitude of the unassigned fund balance that you recommend for municipalities of our size and nature?
Generally, the bond rating agencies will look anywhere between fifteen and maybe, I think, like twenty-five now. I think they went up a little bit. You're definitely on the high end of that. I normally see between twelve and fifteen percent around the state. Can that help you?
And you've gone by, some of your predecessors, and not necessarily with your firm, have suggested that because we're a shoreline town, we're vulnerable to hurricane damage that could adversely impact tax revenues. And for that reason, our fund balance should be greater than average, or greater than an inland community might. Do you, is that something that you've heard of or have you been able to quantify? Well, okay, more of a how much, Martha?
No, I have not. And bond rating agencies always look at more than just your fund balance. They look at a lot of other things, so you'd have to contact them. But I don't have a specific number that you need to reach, if that's answering your question.
Sure. We talked last week about WPCA, and we've got a large sewer project that's going to have some debt that's going to be issued as part of it. Right now, we've funded to date WPCA out of the town operating budget. How going forward will that be reflected on, if at all, on town financials? Will it be consolidated or will they have their own kind of separate entity audit that's required in your experience?
It'll be part of the town's financial statements. Where you want them within the financial statements is entirely up to you. You can have them as a separate fund. You can have them as an enterprise fund versus a governmental fund. If you're going to go the enterprise fund route, you do just need to make sure that you, your total revenue source from the sewer project can fund the operations going forward of that fund. If, if it's going to be supplemented by governmental activities, then I would suggest or recommend that you keep it as a governmental fund.
I thought there is something under the Connecticut general statutes, the WPCA has to be an entity on its own. John, you're instrumental with.
I'm shaking my head. I think it's a separate entity.
It has to be. Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
I'm just, I'm a associate member of.
Even in Point of Woods, they have two sep, they have, it's two separate organizations because it can't be.
Well, it depends on the structure of your WPCA, because during, within the state, I've seen it different ways.
Yeah, my question would be whether it has to be or whether it may be a separate entity.
We'll check the word wording. Shall or may.
Any other, any other questions? You guys completed the audit before the first of the year, and we appreciate that very much. Everything was done timely, and I understand it without any difficulties.
Thank you. It was lovely.
Thank you to Anita for helping us out and giving us information.
We thank her every week.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm the public, but I'm the next CFO. Thank you very much. I've read the audit statements and all of the notes. Very well done. And great to the doctor.
Hi.
How do you say it, John? Dwight Donfli, well, thank you.
Yeah.
I know it's very.
You got it.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Some folks want to, so you can gather the movie scores. Huh? They want the movie scores.
We got games.
Puzzles. Nice.
No, no, no.
Anita?
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have both of your hands up?
Is she breaking?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I know you're going to do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did you have to add stuff into your chatroom?
Yes, I did.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead. Take one and pass down.
All right. It's, oh, wait, this is, this is.
While this is speeding up the ground, you'll find out the, the small handout on top is IT's update. Then the first couple pages is capital. The next page will be roads. The next page will be revenue, and the last sheets will be the full budget. You have a phone line?
I think we just had the right number.
Oh, okay, exactly. Anybody else need one?
Can you, can you walk us through these and just tell us what we're looking at?
Okay, that's what I just went over. Yeah, the first one.
That's the little, the little one.
The little one, that's going to be from IT. Remember, when you're supposed to back up some numbers for capital.
Okay, so that's just IT.
So this is for IT. This is backup. The next couple sheets is the full capital and the transfers. And they're all so that you can turn them over in your book and put them wherever you want in front of the book, and you can turn each page over. So then the next one will be roads. And then the next one is revenue. And then the last pages are the full budget.
Yeah, let's not get to the full budget yet.
Well, that's why I figured we're going to start with capital, so I put capital on top. So it should go in order of what we need, except for, like I said, the little handout for IT goes like, well, you get the transfers.
So this is an update with all of the edits that we've been making?
Okay. Everything has all the edits.
Okay. Thank you, Anita.
So this incorporates what we discussed last week. And, and we want to vote on this in the aggregate, so take a close look at it and see if you have any questions.
The twenty thousand two hundred and fifty came out of Townwood Park is not needed. IT has been reduced. There is one on the capital, on IT, on Tom's paper, the white paper. He was saying about, because we talked about getting the, the whole list set up for here in the American Legion Room, but we cut it off till the next couple of years. He had it in the, for the twenty-five, twenty-six. So I kept it moved out. And.
That's updated eleven thousand five hundred?
Yes. We moved it to six thousand six, so I changed it to six thousand and then fifty-five hundred the following year. And then I changed roads to eight hundred thousand.
Oh, we did our, get our big then so I can release an update on that as well.
Anita, sticking with IT, the subtotal for twenty-five, twenty-six is one hundred and thirty-eight thousand. On the white paper.
The little one?
Oh, no, yeah, that one, no, that one, that's from Tom. That one's from.
You should look at the green, at the big sheet.
Yeah, that's.
On page two. Wait, this was our, like, working copy.
No, that one, that's Tom's sheet. If you look on page three, you'll see fifty-nine thousand eight hundred.
And Tom's online, so that if anybody has a question, he's here to, he'll answer.
And the first four numbers match with what's on this page. It's the last one on the little white page is eleven five. And on the big sheets is five thousand.
Yeah, my only question.
No, that's eleven thousand five. That was the one that we talked about moving to the.
It was twelve grand.
The twelve, yeah, and so I changed it to six.
Okay.
Moved it out of here. It was out of here.
Oh, it's, yeah, I see.
Yeah.
Well, not this year. I see that. Oh, I see.
So that's what we talked about. We talked about previously, it was six and six.
Okay, got it.
So I changed it to six and fifty-five hundred, so it matched the eleven five.
Thank you, that makes sense.
So let's, let's go through it page by page. At the top of the first page, the gazebo, we have ninety-five thousand in it for the current fiscal year, right? Twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, but nothing for the years going out.
So we're in a quandary with the gazebo, that's the one that's come in at a hundred and seventy-three thousand. We've spent approximately seventy-eight hundred dollars on engineering at this point from that ninety-five. We, I, we have to vote at the next board of selectmen, meaning we've had it on the agenda for, this will be our third time. I would like to complete the engineering so that we'll have the total bid package ready to go. That will cost us another, about six thousand dollars more. And then we would have the incomplete bid package and be able to go out to bid when we're ready, just to see what a real cost will be. Because we've got two different quotes, one of ninety-five and one of a hundred and seventy-three.
You chose the ninety-five one?
Well, like, that quote is, but it is invalid because we don't have the draw, didn't have the drawings done. So we are going to fix the gazebo this year with some minor repairs, paint, some rust prevention to make sure it is safe for those who want to use it. And then what would be nice is if we could go out to bid next in the fall to see what we might get, just to see what it would be.
So the ninety-five thousand in this year's budget is twenty.
You're going.
You do what you need, what you want to do this year.
And the board of selectmen is just going to vote whether to continue the engineering or not.
So the question is for, for our plan, whether we should put any dollars in here for the, the next fiscal year or the years thereafter? And I don't have any answer to that.
I don't either. Because I think it's going to, I think it's going to be, how does well does it get through? Those of you who use it, I don't use it. I use it occasionally, but I don't use it, don't know if this is a project, you know, there are some people who think we don't need to take it on right now. And then there are others who do. So we haven't had that big discussion at the board of, because we don't really have a final number. And until we have a better idea of what the real number is, that would be better for us, but we don't at this time because for the last month and a half, I've tried to get the final. If I could have gone out to bid, I would have known what number to tell you to do.
So what is, what is the board thinking? Should we put numbers in knowing that they mean we don't spend them and so the budget is
You're not going to, no.
Or should we leave the numbers out? And if we go to a town meeting and it's approved, then it just comes out of surplus?
I can just have a general question. Martha, we tried to get the exemption from FEMA for the thousand-year storm requirement. Is there any way to possibly petition that and push back?
Depends.
Because that's what's driving this cost.
It's not. Well, it's not totally, because if you look at some of the ones that were built years ago in some other towns, they were also built with pretty much the same standards as we have right now. I think they've just switched between the hundred-year, five-hundred, and thousand-year storm. But I'm not so sure that the standards have changed that much between those numbers. I think when we did ask for the waiver, we, Eric Olson worked with Eric Knapp, and they said, no way. They're not giving an inch on it because of where it's located. So it would be, meanwhile, the other one has stood its ground over time, and we haven't had a hurricane. And we have had, it lived through Sandy. It made it through Sandy and Isaiah's and a couple of others.
My question about it is if we don't intend to build it in this upcoming fiscal year, can we just put the money in for the engineering instead of going to town meeting?
We don't need to go to because we're already at the ninety-five.
We can carry that.
We could carry. I, I suggest we finish the engineering, which will cost us about fourteen total. And then the rest of the money, the eighty-one thousand, we can carry it over. And if we go out to bid and it's another eighty, then, because remember that one seventy-three was a total. That was engineering and building. That was the estimate, so it's up to you.
Well, and my question really wasn't just for the next fiscal year, but for the years going out, because we're going to look at those, whether we should put dollars in as a placeholder. But given the uncertainty surrounding this at this point, even whether we're going to do it, I'm happy leaving those numbers blank, not putting any future expense in this, anybody else is. Well, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I think we should put it in with, with just a note. It's a placeholder. Estimate is one seventy-three, but could be higher or something, just so we've got it, because we're going to forget next year.
Yes.
And try to truncate the conversation a year from now. Maybe we should do that.
So should it be the, the one seventy whatever minus ninety-five plus a bit of a buffer?
I think maybe fifty thousand dollars a year, and then if you do it starting, you know what I mean? If we bridge two years, then we can, we can use the ninety-five that we have, and then we'd have a hundred thousand if we needed it. And I mean, it's just in there as like a placeholder. It's going to be moved around. But I think, I think that if you wait two years, it's not going to be less than, it's not going to go down in price, so.
I mean, if we know we're going to do it, the reality is we really should make sure we're going to try to get it done for next summer.
Yes.
Because this has been kicking around.
Yes.
Seven or eight years anyway. So rather than.
Seems like a hundred thousand?
Another eighty thousand dollars, put eighty thousand dollars in next year's budget. And if it doesn't happen, if the, if the bids come in at two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we can say, then we can send it to the town. Do you want this? We already have this much budgeted. Do you want this to happen? How important is it to you?
Sounds good to me.
I mean, I don't know.
I agree with that.
I mean, we'd be kicking it around.
Forever.
And the price has gone up.
So we're going to put eighty in for?
I don't know. I, I just picked that because it gets us to one seventy-five.
We had seventy-eight, and that got taken out last meeting, but I can add.
Well, not in a twenty-six, twenty-seven budget.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Yeah, just pushing it out.
Okay.
So Andy says.
Andy says twenty-five, twenty-six. Andy says 25, '26.
I was not thinking that.
Oh, you're putting in this year's budget.
If we're, if we're going out and spending the extra money now on engineering, we're going to have a report this summer or in the fall. It can go out to bid and maybe even get done a year from now.
Yeah.
In this year's budget, so it's ready for the summer of '26.
That would be the ideal.
I mean, you're putting Band-Aids on it, we've been putting Band-Aids on what's down there for years. When we decide it's too much and we use the money to take the existing one out and take it to the dump?
Buy some umbrellas.
And put a picnic table down there, it's out in the sun.
So the question, we're not deciding whether to do it because we don't know. The question is whether we should put the 80,000 in the budget as a placeholder in case, so it's there, in case the town, Board of Selectmen and the town, if it goes before a town meeting, if you still it?
I mean, we put the, we put the $95,000 in it for this year, thinking that would get it done. Right?
Yeah.
That was supposed to take care of the whole thing. So as a Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, we said, "We think, by sound speed, it really is an important thing." I guess we'll find out how important we think it is when it goes from 95 to 175. But I don't know how many years is the new one going to be guaranteed?
What else, what others?
5,000 years.
I thought 1,000.
How long has the original, that one that's been up, the one that's down there? Anybody have any idea? Don would think that.
It's been there since, it's been pulled apart and redone. I mean, I feel like the roof's been redone, the whole, like, is there any of it original?
It's not the original one anymore.
Yeah, like...
It is, the roof is.
The original one, the one that picked it up, the roof that had broken down.
Yeah, they redid it.
But you, but the roof was the same roof, you peered it together, right? Did you put a whole new roof on it?
This, this roof hasn't been touched.
Right. Whoever built it knew that they were doomed.
It's just the base that's all.
Let's try it this way, if you don't put the 80 in, we're going to have a hurricane that's going to take it out. If you put the 80 in, we're probably going to be safe another year.
So what do folks think? I don't think we need to take a vote on this specifically, but are there any dissents from putting 80,000 into the coming year's budget? Let's do it.
You can always come back and take it out.
I have a small statement that we want to consider. For the open space, Wildlife Refuge budget, 9,000.
Where is that?
Yeah, I'm going to have to wait count.
I'm trying to decide.
Oh, the Wildlife Refuge?
Yeah, it's a 9,000. I spoke to Greg Futoma, they have a cherry over 4,000. If they complete the project this year, they only need a couple more thousand. So he indicated that could be dropped to 2,000.
There you go, we've got a roof on it.
9 to 2?
Wildlife, go to 2,000?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've got a question on the next page regarding the Gracie Hill Road Bridge construction. Do we have enough money? Is that the bottom or the next page, right above total public works projects? So the money that's been put in the kitty so far, right in prior years, I don't know what it totals, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. But my question is, for this, because we have allocated no further money, it implies that we've got enough in the bank today to do it. Is that a fair assumption?
It is not. We do have a $427,000 grant. We also have, we used it before 2027. So that's more money to put towards this project. Currently, right now, what we're doing is we're working, we have a meeting on April 9th or 10th. I have a meeting with the team out at the site with the property owner, who we'd have to have an easement with, that will go through. If that goes through and it goes well, but, you know, it's coordinating all the vendors with the polls right now. It's a Frontier Poll, but we have Comcast on it, Castle Crown, or Crown Castle, Crown Castle, Eversource. So they all have to coordinate and say what's the load for the poll, how much they can move, what they can do with their wires. And then they have to get the property owner to agree to host the poll. And they actually think they can move the poll to its permanent spot now, once they get the okay to move, that the project is going to move forward. It will move to the spot, we won't have to do it again. And that would be great.
So we, these numbers add up to about 1.3 million. We've got another 400,000 in the grant, more or less 1.7. Do you think that 1.7 is going to be enough?
I asked Howard from our engineer, "Did you give me that?" And then he only came back with what it would cost for engineering. I said, "Howard, that's not it," and he goes, "We'll have to get back to you," and he hasn't. So I did ask for the updated number.
So can, can you do that in the next week or two before we finalize?
Sure, I can talk to him again. Yep.
So that extra 100, now it's 1.8 million. Is that right?
For me, with this one.
Currently, we have 1.363349.
That doesn't include the grant, though?
The grant, yeah. 400,000.
What'd you say it was for? I think it's 427, I think it is. I'd have to go back and check, don't quote me in the paper or anything. I'll get it to you tomorrow.
On the next page, under Capital Fund 25, the town hall refresh, you'll have the notes that we'd like more information.
Okay, that's what's on this sheet, that's...
Oh, okay.
And Tom's online, too, if you wanted to know what refresh, I think, means. So according, do you want me to give you this?
Yeah.
It's about the user community, Windows 10 is going end-of-life, effective October of 2025. And end-of-life means that security and operation patching will no, not longer be supported for these devices. While some of the current PCs were automatically upgraded to Windows 11, approximately 35 machines will need to be replaced prior to the deadline. During fiscal year '26, '27, additional machines will reach the physical end-of-life necessitating replacement. Actual numbers to be determined, he's estimating 45,000 for one year and 40 for the next, we'll know more.
How many machines do we have?
Well, he's saying, what did he just say, some?
35.
Those are not, that they need to be replaced.
65.
The only two machines that have been changed since I've been here, and that's because we got paid for by emergency management, are mine and Katie's. And Jill Karenberg got in a laptop because she was a new hire.
So again...
This is, this is Tom. Andy, to answer your question, there are, there are the 35 machines listed as Windows 10. We have another 19 machines, which are Windows 11. Many of those are laptops. And that sort of folds into the, the next item there, which is our disaster recovery project, where we may choose to replace machines with laptops rather than desktops, such that we can use those in a disaster recovery or business continuity situation.
It seems like a lot of machines for a town hall this size. I know it's not just town hall.
Senior Center.
I know it's Senior Center, Police Department, I assume, fire, not Fire Department. I mean, we don't have...
44 machines?
We don't have 54 employees.
It's 44.
Andy, one other thing to consider.
Tom, are they all assigned, are all of those machines, I know we have one or two that you have that are spares, just in case something, we need one for a meeting or to take it across the street.
Right, we have several owners.
Are those people all assigned to someone?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last question, Martha?
How many of those machines that you're talking about, you're talking about 35 and then another 19, I believe? So how many of those are assigned to an individual?
Probably, I want to say it's 32. Because I have some that are off, they're out of, out of, out of use, either broken or spares. For instance, the one that you had, which we replaced with a laptop, and same with Katie's.
So those are desktops?
Those are desktops, yes.
So the desktop units?
Right, so we've been keeping those just in case somebody else's went down, lost the drive, or we need to swap parts around, et cetera.
We're not buying desktops, are we?
At this stage, we are, although it's been discussed about leasing.
Yeah, we, the 35 that we're, we are replacing, we're going to replace with desktop machines?
Well, I think that's an unanswered question because the, as I said, the disaster recovery, business continuity project sort of makes sense to make every, you know, at least for the folks that management deems as high priority. They, if we're going to have a disaster recovery plan or, you know, somewhere to go for a big event, then we would want to have folks set up with laptops, so they could be mobile.
The thing I would think the default would be everyone has a laptop.
Yeah, great. And you buy, you know, they have a regular monitor, regular keyboard for work at their desk.
They have a docking station.
You know, docking station, which is going to be $99.
Well, not quite, but yes, that's the idea, Andy. And we have, we have done that, the last few machines that we replaced. Martha, I think, mentioned herself, Katie and our HR director have that set up now.
And Vicki, and Vicki.
Tom, is there some way we can take this number of 54 machines that sound like it's a mix of laptops and desktops and not replace every single one of them? And instead just replace the ones that need to be replaced for the people who work here? And then have like, just a two, three spares? I mean, I don't even know if you need that many.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, this is an allowance based on whatever decisions the business makes that they want to do. But yes, sure, that, that's absolutely something that we'll be looking at here. No sense paying for stuff that we don't need.
So if you figure we need to replace 30, maybe, docking sta, um, desktops? I don't even think it's that many, I could probably count.
How about if we look at...
I have a spreadsheet, Martha, Martha, I have a spreadsheet, unfortunately I don't have it in your hands, but I have a spreadsheet that lists out all the, all the machines that are hitting end-of-life and who they're assigned to. And so, yeah, we could, we can certainly work intelligently in that area and make sure that we only get what we need.
So Tom, you say you've got 19 machines that'll make it to 2027, right? That are active machines that are good beyond October of this year.
Windows 11.
So take that 19 out.
Wait, wait, listen, what did you say, Tom?
I'm saying, I was agreeing with Andy. There is a, those 19, a lot of those are laptops. And again, I'll, I'll available my worksheet for everyone, but, and again, we can, you know, do whatever works best as far as distribution. But right now, you know, there's, there's a few people that have a desktop and a laptop. They certainly don't need both moving forward. So we can, you know, we can have savings there.
But what if we did 20 and 20? You've got 19 that'll make it to 2027. If we replace 20 machines in the next six months, that are critical, that Windows 11 will not run on, and you've got 19 others, I know it might require some shuffling, but if they're laptops, maybe it's easier to shuffle. But that would give us 39 current machines.
But I, I think our user number is 53. So, you know, we'd be short, and then there would be people that couldn't work.
I'm understanding it.
I think like you're counting Michelle, like she has a laptop for Board of Finance, and then she also has her desktop?
Yeah, there are, there are some situations like that, which we could weed out, but I, I think...
Right, so she would, she would just go to one, she would just go to one laptop?
Okay, let me, if it makes sense, let me take the worksheet that I've got, that it's unfortunately on my desk right now. And I'll, I'll come up with the minimal number we need to replace.
Let me ask you a question. We ran a few numbers the other day, I have my sheet that you gave me as well. But I do believe that you indicated, we talked a little bit about what it would cost for, per one, right? Because it's not just the desktop, but it's the docking station, and it's the license from Microsoft, which is $450, correct?
Right, there's, because, and this goes back to the, the use of the laptops, we would have to have VPN installed and have licensing for that for all those machines that are converting over from desktops to laptops. So there are some add-on costs there. But, you know, the 45,000, the 40,000 numbers that are listed there, those are allowances. Those numbers were, were provided last year. So, you know, it's, it's challenging to, to decide how many machines you could buy out of that money. But I think the...
We're going to, we're going to need to tighten this up this week again, okay?
Okay, we're going to have to figure out what, what you're comfortable with on numbers of people with machines, which I'll, I'll sit, I'll put some time on your calendar to talk through that, okay?
Okay, sounds good to me. Maybe Andy wants to join in on that conversation, that would be great.
Sure.
If you're...
Martha, for, for the '26, '27 period, and Tom's spreadsheet at the bottom, the numbers don't tie out exactly, he's got 1,000 bucks and 1,500, and we've got 600,000 and 5 grand in there.
Can I, you just tell me where you are?
Yeah, it should be 87,000. The 40...
Does, does this page add up into these columns over here?
No, they don't, they don't. No, it's just the front page.
So what's the second page? More, was it totally different then?
Let's just back up for what he was just talking about, the 3,000 for the disaster, disaster recovery, the 3,000. Sorry, yeah, I didn't come out in color. He highlighted disaster recovery, the 3,000, and the next page matches his front page. The next page is...
What's this column right here?
I don't, I just know he just highlighted 3,000.
The biggest number is the 45,000 in that, in that far right-hand column.
Right.
Yeah, but that's not on the page.
That's, yes, it is, it's this one, right here, it's right here.
So that's the same, that's not...
It's not additional.
Okay.
No, it's not additional, it's his backup, it's his backup that he gave us.
What, okay.
And then he gives us this 3,000, it's a disaster recovery.
What's this number?
That was his, something from his share.
What is, what's the number?
138,000?
Yeah, that probably adds in.
Go ahead.
Is that the regular budget or the operating budget?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because go all the way back here, it's the first.
Well, the operating budget is 239,000.
Here, it has, in that number, it has, it should be front and back on these, doesn't it?
But the CapEx that we're looking at on your new sheet captures everything, and in top, that's all.
She mapped it from after.
It's just stapled incorrectly, this helps, okay, this makes more sense. Much, much more sense, I think.
I think this is the way you need them.
That's fine.
So let's go on, leaving the, the laptop question undecided. And for the moment, we'll just leave these numbers in here, expecting that they'll be reduced next week. Yes?
Yeah.
Unless, do you believe we can always change the following numbers?
Or combination thereof, but for review.
Yeah.
Those are my comments, does anybody else have any questions of your senior numbers that are...
I didn't with the rest of the CapEx, huh?
Say what, it looks okay?
Yeah.
Well, we're now in the question, is it April first?
Yeah.
Then I, I suppose there's no point in voting on this, we're gonna have that special meeting next week.
I mean, I took you to the numbers we have currently, with, with, with the two changes.
Oh, I know, but it's not gonna be final, but there's, there's no point. We have a special meeting in next week, and we'll have final numbers.
On April first.
Final estimates. Well, is it, is it April first?
I don't, I think it's...
Um, I might not be able to, the, the April first, cause I'm waiting on the word that the, no number will be...
We won't have Board of Ed number.
We'll have the capital, uh, can you complete them?
Yeah.
Yeah, but Board of Ed is supposed to give us some more final number, I guess, the first, second week of April.
April first is the date for the population estimate as well.
Right.
Maybe we'll wait another week.
And I think they're waiting for maybe their health numbers, too.
We happen to have a budget hearing, what's that, April fourteenth?
No, it's, it's after that, but it's not too much after that, I'm typically, uh...
It's later this year, I think, because of the school vacation week, maybe?
It doesn't have anything to do with that, I think it's statutory, isn't it? Third week or something like that, can't remember, I think it's third Monday.
It's usually around then.
Michelle, do you know when it is? Cause you're usually our...
Thursday would be the twenty-first.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we were doing school vacation, I'm not saying, the, the budget meeting is the twenty-first of April?
Yes, if it's the third Monday.
Michelle says, yeah.
Yes, third Monday.
And that's statutory.
Yep.
The hearing has to be held, so...
So we're waiting on, cause currently, right now, the budget numbers they gave us, and the numbers we have, it's off about eight hundred thousand dollars, and that is due to the, at the end of the year, they give us a sum up, they, they, yeah, with the extra from last year, and they make an adjustment, so we're still waiting on that adjustment, so the difference of eight hundred thousand is point three zero mil.
So, again, what, what is Ian's ETA for getting us final numbers?
Um, they said approximately April first.
But it is, it's gonna have to be after that, because the student population will be known April first.
April first is what it's based on.
It's not a big calculation.
No, and it's not gonna vary that much, but it might make more sense for us to meet April eighth, or whatever that Tuesday is.
Yeah, let's see how much we can get through today, but I agree with that.
Just to give IT time, ADNA time, Region Eighteen time.
Yeah, the only half to do...
I mean, well, all we control, can control is our budget, and that's what you have to present, a budget improvement. I was, my job is taking the money, happily.
Yeah, okay, well, it'll, it'll work if we can finalize it on the eighth, um, but that's about, uh, not that day, right?
No, you have another, you just have to have it for the twenty-first. You got, you got plenty of time.
Yeah, I, I mean, in the worst-case scenario, we could go with an estimate, uh, at the twenty-first.
But you shouldn't.
Well, most of the numbers are final.
You are, yeah, yeah.
Most of the numbers are final, you could, you would have placeholders that you could fill in.
You can start to do your slide presentation, and then we'll just fill in the numbers.
Okay, so we're done, we're done with this for tonight, right?
Well, pay, yeah, you gotta go to paving and...
We're done with this, done with...
Oh, sorry.
With, with these, uh...
I forgot all the stuff.
Then, uh... Were you able to, um, to meet with Lex's name?
Hey?
Um, and, and, and update this to a, a degree that's reasonable?
Yes, and we also had our bid opening, so, um, from the original quote that we had gotten from Mr. Pastor Act in the fall, we have saved you two hundred thousand dollars, because going to bid, we came down to four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents by Tilcon, so Tilcon will be paving our roads next fall, not Mr. Pastor Act.
Very nice. And like, they comprehend, you never see their name-holes, but I said, you used them everywhere.
Wait, seven...
We have to thank the select woman, because she was the one that pushed the ball to bid, and it paid off.
We had seven companies bid.
Yeah, we had a lot of people bid.
Really?
Yes.
And this is to do all of these roads? Well, whichever ones are highlighted, I mean?
The roads that you had on your original list, Sil, Martino, those type, well, Sil, I think, is coming up, you already did, whatever. The twenty-five, twenty-six year.
Right here?
Martino, the Blue Cone.
Yeah, this one?
Put in green, yeah.
These are in green.
Yeah, let's Katie do it first, yeah.
Yeah, but you did it here for us nicely.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's, it's gonna add up to six forty-four, maybe that's because you used Pastor Act's old number?
Should be voting, no?
I passed right, and then I changed it to eight hundred and eighty, eight hundred and that, you have the votes as...
Yeah, right, and that's why you did, okay.
Right, so, so the, the number, um...
I'm sorry, Martha.
The coming fiscal year is six hundred thousand nine sixty-two, does anybody have any, I asked for a vote on that, did anybody have any questions or comments?
No.
We're putting in eight hundred thousand.
No, eight hundred thousand, right?
We're putting in eight hundred thousand.
What they need hundred?
We're not planning, that's, that's right, cause we're looking to build up that fund, so when it's time to do Four Mile River Road, that's gonna be...
Look a little road, that's before I put out the deals, and it's at one twenty-three million. And, I mean, twenty, twenty-three, I saw it here about four years out, and we haven't looked at Four Mile River Road, Asset River Road. So we have to go and put in the eight hundred thousand here, nine thousand, so we're not taking money out of the fund.
Four twenty-five, yeah.
Thousand, this is all free, I think we were, in other words, support finance, that is a lot large, because it's all from funds, uh, could be spent, what's going on?
He would do that when funds are spent, though, right?
Well, we're all about it, and these can be spent.
But it doesn't affect the budget?
No, what, what I'm saying is, we obviously, in, in terms of the, the budget and the taxes, we're voting on the money to be put in, so you have a bunch of funds with a bunch of money in each fund, and then I think we should, and I assume we have, when money needs to be withdrawn from those funds, the Board of Finance should, in essence, approve those withdrawals. If we don't approve them, then who makes the decisions, right? So I'd like to vote on the, uh, six hundred nine sixty-two.
No, eight, eight hundred, eight hundred.
No, no, we're putting in eight hundred thousand dollars into the fund, the yearly con... This, this is, this, this six hundred and sixty-seven thou, that's the number that we're gonna spend this year, right? Or, or has...
It's gonna be less now, it's gonna be four twenty-seven now. It's gonna be four twenty-seven.
Oh, is that, is that because of Martha?
Yes, I think it's the bid.
Okay, so what's that?
We're gonna put in eight hundred as for the Tilcon deal.
No, he wants to vote on taking out...
Four twenty-seven.
The Board of Finance approving the money coming out of the fund, and then we vote on putting eight hundred in the fund, cause the fund isn't eight hundred thousand, it's bigger than that, so I get where BJ's coming from, uh, what's the fund balance, do we have that in here?
Yeah, well, I was gonna ask, but we asked...
Didn't we ask for that?
Roads, roads and...
All of the, it would be nice to have all of the fund...
You get it every time.
I know, but just on this piece of paper, because this is what we're looking at, we're trying to decide how much money to put in hot, the fund, and it would just be nice to know.
Well, we, we have talked about that, and, and this was one that we had up, up, up to the eight hundred thousands, and there were, there were other funds that I think we should have moved.
Right, but is this, is eight hundred thousand, if we're taking out four hundred and twenty, so we're putting in a little less than four hundred thousand dollars, is, is that, over time, going to be enough money to get us to one point four million, plus whatever other roads we're doing in several years?
Correct.
So, if that's not, then we should discuss, do we push this up even over eight hundred? Like, we just took eight hundred as like a...
So if you look at the new...
Whatever.
Paving sheet, this, this sheet that you have, Katie and Ed have worked extremely hard on this week to review and make sure this is all brought up to date, gosh, they took it out to thirty-nine, forty, I'm not sure who will still be on the Board of Finance then, but, um, you have the expectation out, um, of what it is expected to be for all the roads, so you have an idea, and there are totals on the back, and I believe Ed put a three point five increase per year on each one, thinking that the pricing would be going up.
But the improvement, Ed, uh, and, and, you know, what's, what's the total number that the Tilcon bid?
Four two seven...
Two one nine.
Two one nine.
Four two seven, two one nine, which is al-most thirty percent less than the six hundred, right?
Mm-hmm.
So do we anticipate that the other numbers going out into future years may also be over, uh, overstated?
Depends on...
We don't know.
Depends on oil prices.
Well...
Well, right, but, but the, whatever the standard was, or the metric was, we're estimating this year presumably is the same one used for future years.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but, um, I mean, I'm gonna just give you all the history and what's happened in the last three years with our weather, even though we haven't had the snow, we've had winters that do more damage to these roads than if you had six inches of snowstorm, and when you get rain and then freezing temperatures after it, any road that's got flaws, that's got cracks, you get frost keeps, like, and we do the same thing when we buy fire trucks, we keep adding, we keep that money in there, because you don't, and then, you know, if we have a road that all of a sudden fails, that isn't on the list, it'd be nice to be able to go to the Board of Finance at the end of town and say, hey, I need this, because this road is, is impassable.
Sure.
It's, it's money in the bank, I know, I know this is a rough year, but I think it's penny-wise dollar foolish not to put that balance into that sinking fund.
No, 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 but the question isn't whether to put in less than eight hundred, it's whether to put in more than eight hundred.
So, I went through the next six years, totaled them up, and took the average, and it's one point three million.
Is the average?
Is the average of the next six years that we're gonna spend, that we're gonna spend.
What, what, what?
What is in the fund balance?
What do we have in the fund cadaver?
Two hundred and forty-nine thou, uh, two hundred and forty-nine, one seventy-four.
And we may exhaust that by the end of the fiscal year.
No, we've already spent, um, we put in eight hundred, last year, we spent seven hundred and seventy-two, five twenty-five.
And are this year's roads done?
I have been watching this, because I remember when this, this account was first made, that was the plan behind it, is not to spend a full eight hundred dollars if you can help it, and back then, it was capable, you were capable of doing that, now with the way the price is, and now we're going to bid, I still think that to be...
Yeah, I mean, we've got expensive years coming up. That's why I just don't think eight hundred thousand is enough.
At the BJ's point, the next year's estimate that we have is six hundred thousand, it's thirty percent less, given that the others are twenty percent less. Well, we're gonna know, I mean, I, I guess...
Well, but I, I agree with that, but it, but I also raise the question, uh, I mean, Ken's arithmetic obviously is correct, and my guess is that eight hundred thousand a year is less than we're gonna need to spend in the future, and we should build up a fund, my question is, should we start doing that this year? If we have two hundred thousand dollars, uh, in, in the fund today, and we're gonna be putting in another three seventy-five with the excess of eight hundred over four twenty-seven, and then we put in another eight hundred thousand for, uh, the next fiscal year, we'll have enough for, for the next year or maybe two, so my, my question really is, should we start today or postpone bringing our road fund up to...
I think we at least, we maybe don't go up to one point three million, but we should maybe consider putting another hundred or two hundred thousand in there.
Or at least budgeting that out into the future?
Right.
So that, for our numbers, we can say, you know, we understand this year's an expensive year, but that just means we're gonna have to push it up further next year, potentially.
You're looking at a station next year, like, it's an expensive year, and we wanna kick the can down on the road again, so when are we gonna have to pull this?
Because in two years, we've got million-dollar years, then we're gonna...
Yeah, right, right.
We'll swing away eight hundred thousand, that's...
I lost the sheet, but there was a year we originally put in a million dollars.
It, yes, it...
There was.
Losing what?
That was my...
Three years ago?
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah.
That was the half week growth, yeah, so it's not like that number hasn't come before, so there are a lot of towns, they're bonding for their roads.
Yeah, it's in the paper this month.
Yeah, so, so whether, whether or not this is a year to add to that eight hundred thousand, that's the real question.
Right.
We know we're gonna have to add to it at some point, but maybe right now is not the right time, or conversely, maybe we should take Ken's suggestion and go up to a million, even though we think that's gonna be below the average. What do people think?
I mean, it's at least preventing you from having to put one point five.
They're gonna continue, I mean, you know, the, the elephant is the embodiment of the...
Rebuild, yeah.
Bonds, that's not going away. So, you know, I'm happy it's going up to a million, others, Andy, can you do that?
I guess I'd have to look and see what the total's gonna be at the end, so, you know, we added a hundred here and a hundred there, and also we're adding a billion dollars.
I think for tonight's, for tonight's purpose, I'd be okay with a million bucks.
That's so good, that's what chicks have to be.
Knowing that that's a place we could come back to when it looks bad at the end.
And do you want me to look to put that going forward, may know, if you're...
I would.
I would.
Well, we'll put it on it, yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's have a motion for, um, approving the four twenty-seven, two nineteen withdrawal from the fund for this year.
BJ, can we do the budget first?
Yeah, I think the next item on the agenda is transfer out.
In May or June.
Yeah.
Ed's not gonna spend that money till fall.
September.
Well, we really need to get the budget done, and, so the number we really, I think, need to vote on is a billion dollars in the Road Improvement Fund, if that's what we're gonna do.
I mean, it's not a big dimple, but we're gonna work with that.
Cause a million dollars is what's going forward now.
Well, I wanna vote in the million dollars, I also wanted to vote in the four twenty-seven, and was the rationale for postponing the four twenty-seven?
Can I ask?
We don't have the budget yet, so spend the four twenty-seven.
Can I just say something?
We don't have the money in the fund, spend the four twenty-seven.
The four twenty-seven is covering the roads that Ed has on the market, but I know there's one road he's watching, because he thinks he's gonna have to do a small, you know, what do you think, it's gonna be like twenty thousand, that one road, you're looking to do that small area, because you think it's crumbling?
What road?
I don't remember, he came in the other morning and said, hey, I'm looking at a road.
I have a spot on Academy Lane, Lieutenant River Road, that we had to dig out, that's probably gonna be closer to twenty by the time we get, it's too big for us to do by hand, so, that might be high, but right now, you don't know what's going on with oil prices and everything.
Is that because of all the construction that was down there on the houses?
I blame it on the construction on that house, the big triaxals going in there, out in the corner, loaded with their panels down, and...
So BJ, I'll make a motion for the million dollars for the road fund.
Seven.
Any discussion, any further discussion? Hold on, favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Okay, so we're gonna put the million in, and then the question is, what are we gonna take out? And Martha, are you saying you'd like to wait? I, I don't, I don't, uh, I'm not sympathetic with Andy's point that we should delay it, I think we're gonna authorize it, but would it make sense to wait for a few months until Ed has a better handle on what he needs?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
I do. I mean, I'm gonna sign, I'm gonna sign this agreement with Tilcon tomorrow to say that we've accepted their bid, but if they know the work isn't coming till the fall, so, they're gonna hold that price for us.
Yes.
So...
Because they were told they're gonna bid that probably if most of them are gonna be going in here till fall, because of the beaches, it would be totally firm, I would
All right, so we're done with the roads. Is the next? The other we could put? When we looked at this last week, and I don't think we made any changes, have we?
I changed.
The interest rate, funds, and the balance.
We, um, I also, I did, as you see, I, um, I added money into the selectman's office after doing research, um, back in twenty. Twenty-two, twenty-three, um, and that's what I've been holding, um, but Kevi was done differently. Um, and when I came in, it was being charged to miscellaneous for the permits for the selectman's office. So I am moving back to the selectman's office. Currently, this year, I can draw entry this month. Um, it's four hundred and.
Four thousand.
Yeah, four thousand, four hundred, I think, and twenty-eight dollars, um, to date for permit. So I took some money out of the miscellaneous and I added it to the, um, the selectman's office. So it's the same dollar amount that I just.
I have to see it on here.
Oh, is it the blue line?
The blues.
Oh, the blue, okay, thank you, thank you.
Green is green.
Thanks.
So I did, I also need to correct for the record. Um, last week when we talked about emergency management and he had in, uh, for his capital, the hundred and sixty for his, um, communications, that hundred and sixty is from the town money. It is not, he had reimbursement on his paper, he gave me, sort of backup. It is not reimbursable, I verified it with him. That is town funded. It is not reimbursable. Only the one twenty going towards the EOC is refundable next year.
That's for the radios?
Yes.
The P fours?
Is this, is that that, is this the continuing radio project?
Right.
That we have gotten reimbursed for part of it, that because of the EOC, that money's going towards the EOC and not towards the radio project because we only gotta get a hundred and twenty?
Right.
No.
No matter what?
Well, yeah, I think.
No, I think, remember last year, you talked about the fact that they were stopping reimbursement and you had to accelerate the purchasing? He's not here at the moment. I can remember him sitting down at the end and guys said, this is not gonna, we're not gonna be able to do it, so we've gotta accelerate the purchasing. It was because they were going up.
I do remember that one, too, because that's why we bought some, or he had money in this year, for here. But the one for next year is not reimbursed.
So the interest rate, what did that get changed to?
Three point five.
So what was it before?
I was using three.
Ah, okay.
Because that's like the, the standard and the interest rate, so we went to three point five.
That's good.
Yeah, you just, I could answer this with a little time looking at it. So the budget for this current year for revenues, other than taxes, the budget is three million, seven hundred. And for the coming year, it's four thou- four million, four hundred.
Okay.
For an increase of about seven hundred thousand.
Right.
Off the top of your head, where's that seven hundred coming from?
Look from the city navigate.
They've given us more money?
Yes, they have.
Thank you. Oh, and there's more money probably in, in the investment earnings than there was in this year's life.
Correct.
Well, we're talking about revenue. Last year, Martha, when the senior center was, came back with their money, from the effort to raise money from the community, how is that gone?
So there was a vote, so here's what's happening. There was a vote taken by the building committee that when they started to finally look at it, that they decided people were not going to give to the fund because the building was already up. So instead, what we've done is that we knew that there were going to be some in what we call enchanted, we're calling them enchanted enhancements of things that are probably still needed. And at the grand opening, people will be given that list and if they choose to buy something, so, like, we've had some people, we've already reached out to do the, um, I got the NA to chip in for the furniture for the town nurse's office. Another group chipped in and bought the benches for the memorial garden. Someone else bit, chipped in and did the library boxes for outside. I bought the freezer for the, um, I bought the freezer for the kitchen because that was my donation. So we've all chipped in, in other ways. I know Alan Shinas wants to chip in for something. Uh, he's thinking of buying them a printer, so we're trying to do it in those types of things, things they'll actually use, um, and do it.
So we didn't, we didn't go out to the public and say, hey, here's an opportunity.
We're going to give them some opportunities and if they choose to want.
A year ago, it was discussed, I just.
It was, it was, but they, um, we went back and forth on how to, and we did reach out. We tried to have a luncheon and I think it was like July or August, we invited people to luncheon and only one person responded, they were coming out of ten. So we decided that wasn't probably gonna be a fun luncheon. So. That was our, that was our effort for to spearhead, start spearheading the finance, but.
Any, any questions or comments about the revenues?
I have one. Looking at the audit, the investment income is one point four million dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And we have on our sheet that it was one million dollars. So that's.
Page are you looking at in the other?
Page eight.
And is it the over everything, is it everything together or general fund? If it's overall, because the other funds aren't earning interest as well.
And so that builds up dedicated funds as opposed to going?
In that to us, it goes into the overall picture of everything that we do.
Right, but, but if I have the road fund and it earns fifty thousand bucks.
It stays in the road fund.
It stays in the road fund, so it's not consolidated here.
It does not go into the general.
On your sheet, but it is consolidated here.
It's consolidated.
In the audit.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's, um, where you see that other fund, um, the miscellaneous fund is the restricted, that's the grants and the ARPA money. Uh, so all of that is there. The, where it says other funds, that is the ones that I give you the capital and the, um,
Special funds?
Yeah, thank you. So it's that, that's all your other funds. So that's when you see interest and everything there.
Yes.
It's all in that now. So all those numbers together is where you're gonna see consolidated number.
Got it, thank you. I, I lost a little bit, Anita. So for the, to David's question, for twenty-three, twenty-four actuals, there's a million, uh, thirty-four thousand in the total investment income, right? Or, so it's a bottom?
Is that the bottom to date? Yeah, to, oh, yeah, for, yeah, last year, yeah, that's actuals.
A million thirty-four thousand, and my question is, does that, does that not include interest that we've earned on cash in the various funds? Does that show?
That's on your financials. Huh? That's in the financials, ain't it?
But it's not on the.
No, well.
You don't pick it up?
This is only general fund. The budget is general fund.
So within the fire truck fund, if that earned fifty grand, that just stays? But we're using, aren't we using these revenue figures for determining the budget for next year?
Right, and general fund is the budget for next year, not the other funds.
Uh, I mean, if we, if we, if the other funds are generating five hundred thousand dollars worth of interest, that's coming into Martha's pocket next year.
Nothing's going into my pocket.
But it's come, it's coming into the town bank account.
It's staying into that fund, though.
So that, but here's the thousand dollars, so a million dollars we put into the road fund.
Mm-hmm.
As it sits there, it's gonna earn interest, so maybe it'll be a million, twenty thousand dollars, so that extra twenty thousand. Will go towards paving.
No, no, but. Down, including the revenue number, the interest going on the various funds.
And because your expenses for the roads don't come out of the general fund, they come out of the road.
His, his, his point is, and I agree with it, that like, we're determining money to put in the funds, but we don't know how the funds are building. And it would be nice to see both on, on this spreadsheet. I understand it's.
Last year, I gave you a spreadsheet that gave you down every, what every account had, what every account was spent, what was in hold, and everybody got very confused over it, so I did not do it again this year.
It shouldn't be on the general sheet. Isn't, well, it's not in the general fund, but again, my question is, should we not take it into account when we decide?
When you decide where the money is gonna come from, I have the whole spreadsheet and what is there, so I can tell you, so you.
When we, when we decide how, how many dollars in taxes we need to raise and therefore what mill rate we need to establish, should we not be taking into account interest that will be earned on the other funds?
Right, and if you remember correctly, last year, what we did discuss when it came time to money, when it came time to money, we talked about what was in each fund and what was in the excess and how much you would have to take from the general fund and how much you would not have to use and how much you would use from these funds instead of letting these funds accumulate too, too much money in them. And we did have that conversation, and I have a spreadsheet here to talk about.
I mean, that doesn't answer my question.
I mean, I, I think another way, at least I look at it, is that if those funds are earning interest, you know, we talk about contributing to the funds and not knowing what inflation is gonna be. That interest that we're earning means that the million dollars we put into it this year, five years from now, it's at least earned some interest so that when inflation and whatever oil prices cause the paving to cost more money, we, it gives us a better way to help cover that difference, yeah.
Well, yeah, and, and, you know, earning interest is a good thing. Just from a financial statement standpoint, it doesn't make sense to me that we ignore it. Now, I understand it's on our audit statements, but for our purposes, I mean, how many dollars are we talking about? How many dollars in interest do you think we get from?
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred overs across a bunch of funds.
Across all of those. Fifteen, because in the audit, it was one point four million, on this sheet, it's about a million.
Right.
So BJ, another way to look at it is, um, we look at the balance, right now, we ask Anita, hey, how much is in the road fund? And it's two hundred and sixty-two grand or whatever it is. That already includes interest that's been earned, so that's a starting balance to me. I don't care where it came from, but two sixty-two is what I'm concerned about when I say I would be in favor of a million bucks this year instead of eight hundred thousand. Yeah, well, no, I, I agree with that, and this is not really material. But if you're talking about a delta for this past year of four hundred thousand dollars, say that goes down next year because interest rates drop to maybe two hundred thousand or two hundred and fifty thousand, on the forty-two million dollar budget, you know, that's not a big deal. And if we omit that and sort of, uh, you know, we, we pretend we're not gonna get it and we raise a little more, we raise two hundred thousand dollars in taxes more than we would have to if we included that, I don't care. I'm just saying from an accounting standpoint, doesn't make sense to me, but that's fine. Yeah, but we should keep it in mind, though, when we, when we do, uh, vote on what to contribute to the fire, fire truck fund.
That's where, that's, I think, where it comes to apply.
Yeah, the fire truck fund has a million dollars in it and we wanna put a hundred and fifty grand, but we haven't accounted for fifty grand of interest. We could only transfer a hundred grand, for example. I think that's probably the more utilitarian, um, uh, conclusion from your observation.
And that was the other thing, too, was with the fire trucks, because we did pull up the interest on those funds, that's helped buy the fire truck faster.
Right.
Otherwise, we would have had to put more money into that fund.
And when we sell an apparat- fire apparatus, that money.
That goes into the general fund.
Goes into the general?
Yeah, because it's, we sell a general fund asset.
All right, I thought one time it went into a fire, fire apparatus.
Alabama South?
Alabama, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Five, seven hundred thousand.
They sold, when they sold the, um, little boat, you put it back. Yeah, but I thought they got it into their train, went to their training budget.
It went into.
I think they fell.
It went into perfect set.
And who else? So BJ, what do we have in there, do you have anything else? No, I don't, unless anybody has more questions or comments, but it's a content of good stuff. So what we, 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 Anita, it was just the, the final budget without whatever changes we made today.
Yeah, we should, it'd be great. It's on the back of the, that's fine. Okay. That's yours.
So Anita, should we be just looking at the total from the last page or what?
What am I looking at, I'm sorry?
The budget.
On the budget? The bottom one. The budget's bottom, I just kinda execute. If you look at the bottom one, the, the whole box for the budget, without the couple of changes just added into capital, you'll see that the new bottom line will be forty-five, five, four, zero, nine, fifty-seven, which, over the current expenditure with all appropriations included, it's a four point five percent increase. Using the original budget amounts prior to the one point six five one three forty preparation transfers, it would be eight point one three.
Anita, um, and, and you have also the column for the Board of Selectmen, where there's the difference of a little bit, hundred thou- two hundred thousand dollars. That's not relevant to us, can I, I assume?
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
But you guys pretty much matched everything.
But then what, what you're saying is that the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five is forty-three point seven six and the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six as proposed is forty-five point five four for an increase of one point seven million. Now, does this, does this include the, um, Ian's last estimate for the school budget for the coming year?
This is based on seven point three nine percent only. It is not based on it because they were saying that they only were gonna go up seven point three nine percent. So we had seven point three nine in the budget total. If I.
All right, sorry, no.
Yeah, so that's what we were going off of him saying, the seven point three nine. So that's all that, that, I took last year's number, multiplied it by the seven point three nine and increased it that amount where we were doing the estimates.
So that number could change some based on population and whatever his final number is.
His final number right now, if I took it without any adjustments and the number he was showing in his projected number was almost eight hundred thousand higher. But again, he has to do the adjustment for the end of the year. They do their end of the year adjustment, like there's the two percent in the surplus and they give us so much, refunds us so much. So I don't have that number. Um, and that's what Holly, I talked to Holly, and they were still working on and they're looking at an equal first date for me.
So this, so this does, this includes kind of an estimate of what our education fund is gonna be, and it will change, but we don't know by how much.
Well.
So the one point six five one three four zero, are those, those are transfers from the general fund?
Yeah, that is what, fund balance, out of the fund balance, 900, it's 9, I didn't check on this.
It looks like it's broken down below.
Yeah.
David, where are you looking?
I'm looking on the last.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty just broken down.
It is broken down below, oh, that's what that's, okay, that makes sense.
Out of those numbers, out of the 1.6, the 908,390 came from unassigned fund balance. 742,950 came from a FEMA grant, so will be scheduled as a receivable at the end of the year to back up for the E O C.
So, we took out of.
Out of fund balance.
General fund, 900 grand roughly.
Yes.
Okay. And why did you do that? You know, the question of how much to take out of the unassigned fund balance is a decision that we, we have to make, you know, in this conversation.
You did make it, it was the 1.445 like a hawk's nest. It's for the zoning publications, 54, 55,000. Soundview sidewalks, 60,000, Rogers Dam, 19,925. E O C, 1,352170. The Maurens, 119,969. For a total of 1,651340.
So some of that were our votes and some of that were town meeting votes. I mean, we have to come from the emergency management center. That has to come out of our surplus, our undesignedated fund. So that's why, you know, the audit, as a 230, it's an accurate number, but that number's been reduced at this point by 1.6 million?
Well, no, it, the, the 742 is receivable from FEMA because we're getting that money. So it's 908,000.
It's almost a million dollars.
So we're talking, okay, so we're talking about the current fiscal year, not the next fiscal year.
Right, yes.
That's my confusion. Okay, so what you, what you're saying is that to pay these expenses during the current fiscal year, we have to take 908,000 dollars from the, that makes perfect sense. And, and, but that's the total of it. So if we started with 14 million, we're projected to have about 13 million.
And I did do an estimate and it looks like this year, projection looks like between 1.4 to 1.5 that we will have in surplus at the end of the year.
That will transfer back to surplus, yes.
Oh, okay, so we take, we take 900 out, but we put 1.4 in, so we have a net increase of half a million?
Yeah.
Good job.
Great, next year, don't expect it. Next year's numbers are even.
And then, what are we expecting this year to have to go to town meeting on?
Um, for.
Anything.
Anything. Order exchanges.
There was, there was one project under capital expenses that harbor management had, that we sort of, for that.
You approved the funding if they got the grant, remember that.
That's, that's in the management department, that's already in there.
It's already in there, okay. The only thing that I can think of is any, if drafty hook comes in way above what it's going.
Emergency management.
They're, they're really, yeah. Senior Center, Senior Center's going to come in.
What happened with the senior?
They're going to get money.
No, it was the Horse Neck Creek Dock last time. So we said that's something that the town should decide if we want to build that.
Yeah, that's a small number though.
Yeah, right.
So the only two things that we know that we're going to need, and then the question is, anything that we could need as well? Is that, emergency center is a good example. Anything else that Hall's Road might want to do?
They told me not to spend any more money last week. He told me I couldn't, so I just put the brakes on.
We saved us money last week.
What about the sewers?
So the sewers are still, I mean, as David said, the sewers, we sat here one afternoon for two and a half hours with a bonding agent, Michael Carey, Steve Saname, myself, and battled out numbers. And Michael Carey said that everything looks like it's coming from the clean water funds and the clean water funds are all going to Old Colony, and Old Colony's supposed to manage them. I'm assuming that's part of the 15 million also loan and now that we get 27.9%. Steve says that we have to go back to referendum for the additional money, but the money is being paid back to us by the townspeople when they take out their loans for clean water funding. So, interestingly, BJ and I had a conversation yesterday with some people from Point of Woods and they were saying exactly that, that the, their 400 residents pay back to their fund from their clean water funds that they took out their loans on and they pay back. They pay their monthly installments to their W P C A. And that's all their funds solidified into their own little group, just like Old Colony will have theirs, Miami will have theirs. I mean, whatever. We're talking about the fact on whether they develop themselves into their one W P C A for all four groups. Right now, it's a little, John's on W P C A and John, you can correct.
You said very well, you're, you're perfect so far.
Right now, we have no bids yet from Miami, but they're going back out to bid. Old Line Shore's going to have a meeting on May 24th to decide if they're going out to bid. If they go out to bid and all four are together, there are possibilities that we might pull this off, going out, digging a hole in the ground in the fall. But that would be my best estimate. I know some people had hoped we'd be digging a hole in April, but start in April and then continue in the fall again.
Excuse me, but you're, you're right. And again, Steve's ideal is if you could get all four W P Cs into its own, still W P C A, it's, it's its own entity.
Right.
Right now, the W P C A is a, is a town department. It's not, it's an independent legal entity, but it could be.
Well, it does act under its own Connecticut general statutes.
We have.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
They have the ability to tax, yeah, they have the ability to tax and collect money.
And therefore bond, they could.
That was the question last week, was whether or not they would need the town to back the bond or whether they would be able to do that all on their own, but what would they back it for?
Property owners.
Exactly.
So based.
That was our, that was our question last week.
I'm going to go to Steve on that.
Yeah, we weren't sure about how that would work for us and for them, what it looks like for.
And Steve's away.
Des that we're taking on.
I think he comes back tomorrow, maybe he came back today.
Did Mike Carey have any advice on how to structure this, has he, has he dealt with W P Cs in other towns?
I don't know if he indicated that in our meeting, our meeting was back in the, was before we went to bond. When, because I was trying to make sure that if I had to go to bond for the senior center and I needed to bond for sewers, I wanted to know all at one time. But after that two and a half hour meeting, Michael Battello said to me, no, I don't think you do. Now, of course, we hadn't gone out to, we hadn't gone out to bid yet.
But I know, I know you were, and I thought you were referring to a current meeting. You know, you've been trying to get people together to.
Yes, I know, I'm like, I am supposed to.
And that, I think that needs to happen, I'd be happy to attend, but, yeah.
No, he asked me to get.
But the question, this is the question.
Steve, Steve did make a comment at a prior meeting that he may be looking at, I think we put money in budget for consultant to help us go through how you set this up with multiple agencies and then put together an organization to be self-funding because then we'll have employees.
Yep.
Well, either, either the agency will or the agency could sell the contract to a vendor. Correct, to do, to do the day-to-day operations work, so that's, that's down the road.
So I think that, like, Point of Woods said that they have the 400 houses, only 100 are year-round, but they kind of share the cost of like the sewage by house, not, they don't do a calculation on how much water. So the people who are living year-round are getting a deal, but the other people feel that it's just, I guess justified. John, you, you don't live there, right?
No, I don't, no. I mean, yeah, we, we worked out the U D Us and all that, so.
Yeah, but they're, but they're working on it and they, they have a very good relations with their. And I personally believe that all four bodies should go into one W P C A. These are all residents of the same town, they're all using water from Connecticut Water. They should be on the same, the same billing cycle and W P, and Connecticut Water is willing to do the billing for them. They don't do the billing for Point of Woods, they do provide the usage, but they don't do the billing, they do their own.
They do their own, yeah.
But they only have 400 houses, we're going to have a few more.
So, but in terms of Board of Finance and tonight, the question is, do we have to provide for any funds with respect to the sewer project? And I guess my knee jerk is to say, we may have to bond or we may have to guarantee a bond, but that doesn't involve the outlay of money except for the fees. And so for tonight's purpose, I think the answer.
I'll try to get you, I'll try to get you more answers by the end of the week.
I would end up going to town meeting, I mean, I would, I should go to.
Have to, yeah.
Better in our budget.
Right. Would have to go to referendum again.
So, yeah, but I'm, I'm just thinking and certainly hoping that at the end of the day, we might be a guarantor, but we're not going to be out of pocket dollars. Because if we bond, somebody else will pay back the bond, right? Anita, we typically have reductions for Rife Field Manor, for example, and, and tax rebates. We did those things.
We did that.
We voted on those.
No, but David's saying they, they, we, we get down to calculating, but no one, we have to. So Anita, did you, have you done any tinkering to come up with mill rate?
Again, I, yes, I have. If I use the higher number for the board then, I'm just adding in the numbers to see if I.
What's, what was the higher number?
It was like 800,000.
800, okay.
It was like 800,000.
So adding 800, it was over, a little over, so 32, 5-ish.
I was coming close to 16.9.
What, 16.9?
Your mill rate, no, right?
Oh, the mill rate.
With the higher, and I'm just adding the couple changes we just made.
Right, the number makes no sense to us without looking, right, at the grands versus the old grand list, blah, blah, blah. So out of the blue, 16.9 in the abstract doesn't mean anything. But looking, and, and you may have put some numbers together to equate the current grand list to the old grand list to make that reduction. But just looking at these numbers, it, it, it looks to me, if, if the numbers on this sheet are correct, if there's a 5, a 4.05% increase based on the 45,540, that's really good news, right? But that includes transfers though, BJ. The, the actual number that we set our mill rate on last year.
Was the one beneath, the eight, the one, the eight?
Is 42,119,932.
Right underneath it. Because original.
Well, it's the 42, so you mean some of the 2425 budget?
Yeah.
That was the actual budget that we used to set the mill rate.
But what's the difference between the 437 and the 421?
All those, the adjustments, the adjustments we made, the 1,651.
The 1.6.
It didn't come out of revenue that we raised, but came out of money that we had socked away or had reimbursed.
I got you. But the, okay, so but.